Thank you, I'd like to call this November 14th meeting into session. Speaker of the legislature, would you call the floor?
Speaker of the House.
Here.
Milo Potter.
Here.
Edward Gilson.
Here.
Dana Bullis.
Here.
Roy Rehill.
Here.
John Martino.
Here.
Brad Luchardell.
Here.
Paul House.
Here.
James Wetherup.
Here.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
Here.
Linda Lockwood.
Here.
Richard Klein.
Here.
Patrick Quist.
Here.
Stephen Walpole.
Here.
Nathan Emmons.
Here.
Thomas Stroms, Absinthe, Skew, Shane Broadwell.
Here.
Heather Del Contick.
Here.
Marisha.
Here.
Tim Stahl.
Here.
Terry Wilber.
Here.
James Grasset.
Here.
Morse Rabello.
Here.
Name of five.
Here.
Frank City.
Goodness it!
At this time, before please stand. At this time, we're gonna have a moment of silence for the passing of former legislator Kenneth Wheeler Jr., who served on the Board of Supervisors starting back in 1966. He continued to serve up until last year as Chairman of the Legislature in 1979. He recently passed within the last week or two, so we're gonna have a brief moment of silence. As we come together today, let's give thanks for this opportunity to serve our community. Help us to be kind to one another as we confront difficult decisions. Let us remember that we all wish for a healthier, happier, more prosperous tomorrow, and that debates we enter are only to decide which road to take. Grant us clarity of purpose, courage to resolve in all that we do, and protect us from all distractions. Amen. And at this time, we welcome a representative from the US Coast Guard Station, Talius, hand the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
Chris, can she introduce herself?
You.
I'm Stephen Crowe. My first name is Molly. I actually just graduated Boot Camp September 27, and I'm stationed right over here as we go, stationed as we go.
Thank you. We need a motion to approve the minutes on the Legislature regular meeting on December 10th and also a special meeting on October 10th and October 17th.
So may.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry, thank you. At this time, under introduction of visitors, could I call on legislator Cattler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, District Number One. As you know, I won't be here next year, but my replacement is in the back of the room, Mike Urdin from Redfield, so you'll see him. They're getting him, he's a kangaroo.
Thank you, Mike. Um, legislator Potter.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to introduce Herb Urdin. He'll be filling my shoes next year. He's standing in the back by the door.
I guess I would mention that, yes, you heard it right, there's two Urdins, brothers.
It's a lot more than that, too, I hear.
Legislator Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of us may, or may not, I guess, know, at the end of the month here, or this meeting, I guess, will be the last meeting for one of our journalists who has followed county politics for 10 years and has been in the business for 41 years. It was a great honor and privilege to be able to honor and thank Deborah Groom. Wish her good well in her retirement and her future endeavors, so, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the Public Safety Committee forward along with June Alton and Director David Hall.
Well, on behalf of the County Legislature and all of our citizens, we want to present a certificate of appreciation to June Alton for her 25 years of service to Oswego County. It's greatly appreciated, and I'm sure you're gonna be here for a number of more years because you're a very young lady who wants to stay here and loves your job. I know that Director Hall has a few words to add as well.
I just want to say thanks for her hard work and dedication and point out that June's actually taken on some hard duties in the project. For a long time, she supervised one of our sex offender case loads, which is a real tough, tough job, so she volunteered to do that, which was great. She went through our academy, a training camp for our special services, so, quite a while ago, but she did that. So she stepped up a lot and did a lot of extra stuff, so she should be honored for that.
She's staring, throw the light off.
At this time, I'd like to bring the STOP DWI Coordinator, Robert Lighthall, and District Attorney Oakes, if he's in the room, yes, he is.
I'm the sheriff, I'm the sheriff from the...
See that?
Stand up, Mary.
Okay, on the count of three, one, two, three. And a second, one, two, three. Thank you.
Sweet money Legislature and observation of STOP DWI Month. Whereas the New York State Special Traffic Options Program for driving while intoxicated, STOP DWI program was established in November of 1981 to coordinate state and local efforts to reduce impaired driving offenses and to prevent crashes across the state. And whereas the STOP DWI program was approved by the Oswego County Legislature in November of 1981 based on state legislation for the purpose of empowering localities to enact creative and collaborative strategies utilizing education, awareness, and enforcement to address drunk and drug driving and to prevent tragedies resulting from impaired driving crashes. And whereas, the program provides a platform for STOP DWI coordinators from each county and the city of New York to exchange ideas and collectively discuss and act upon mutual objectives that help advance these goals. And whereas, since the program was enacted, fatalities from alcohol-related crashes on New York's roadways have decreased 74%. Now therefore, be resolved that I, James Wetherup, Chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, and on behalf of the entire Legislature, do hereby proclaim November 2019 a STOP DWI month. I encourage all citizens to increase their awareness that impaired driving is dangerous and to observe this month and recognize the programs and support this mission.
Well, I'd like to thank the STOP DWI program, all the, more than just these agencies as well, that helped with the efforts, but one small thing, one note that I would like to make is that our Director of STOP DWI, Bob Lighthall, was recently awarded the Richard Novelli Award for 2019. He's recognized his alcohol and drug awareness presentations. He conducts over 100 presentations each year in local middle and high school community events and at the county fair as well. These presentations reach beyond our county, with other counties implementing portions of his presentations. He's also done some guest presentations in Keoga, Jefferson, and Hottendale counties. The Novelli Award was instituted to honor the memory of L. Richard Dick Novelli, died of cancer in 1993 while serving as the STOP DWI Coordinator and Traffic Safety Director for Hottendale County. Because of Dick's role as an educator, the award is given to programs that further STOP DWI and our traffic safety principles through community education. Primary considerations are the program's impact on the community, the originality of the design, incorporation of either STOP DWI or traffic safety principles, and the adaptability of the program to other communities. Considerations also given as to whether the program could be used regionally or on a statewide basis. Obviously, with receiving this award, Bob Lighthall really has incorporated all of those great, great points into his presentations, into the program of STOP DWI. So, on behalf of the County Legislature and our citizens, we want to thank you, Bob, personally for everything you do, along with all the agencies that help you with this department because we know you can't just do it alone, so, thank you.
The adjutant said I should invite all my partners up with it, so just by everybody in this room, and probably about a third of the county should be up for the next photo. I work with every single school district in Oswego County. They're fantastic to work with. I retired and thought I was gonna hit back and relax. That lasted about two days. I love what I'm doing. Giving out to the schools, trying to get the message to the students. Earlier this week, I was at the college presenting to them, and it's an eye-opener. It's for everybody. The county fair, any community events that I get out to in order to get the message out there. I can't do it alone. It takes all the community. Last year, I gave a lot of statistics about what we've accomplished since 1982. And statistically, they stayed pretty much there. However, 2019, so far, Oswego County said 19 traffic fatalities. Six of those were alcohol-related. Worse yet, two of them were drug-related. We've got a lot of work to do. I've got great partners here, the sheriff, the inner sheriff. Probation works tremendous with me, not only with the offenders who wind up on probation, but anybody that's going through the victim impact, you know, to help run that. But it takes everybody. Our mission has a plan. No argument, I can say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the Human Services Committee forward, along with the Salvation Army.
The Oswego County Legislature recognizes Oswego County Salvation Army's 2019 Red Kettle Campaign season. Whereas the Oswego County Salvation Army is a well-established nonprofit organization with a mission of assisting all Oswego County residents without discrimination. Whereas the Red Kettle Campaign is an annual funding effort whereby money raised helps Oswego County families and individuals in time of need. Programs include soup kitchens and food pantries in Oswego and Fulton, and the Christmas program supplying food baskets and toys for children within that county. And whereas the Salvation Army's 2019 Red Kettle Campaign goal of $70,000 is required to maintain services throughout the upcoming year. And whereas, all funds raised will be reinvested into the Oswego County community to provide food and clothing for those in need. Operate through pantries which distribute monthly food boxes, soup kitchens providing lunch Monday through Friday, and cover operating expenses. And whereas, the Red Kettles will begin to ring their bells on Friday, November 14, at Christ Chaper and other locations, and November 29 at Walmart. Now therefore, be resolved that I, James Wetherup, Chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, hereby recognizes Salvation Army's Red Kettle Campaign season and encourage all citizens to support the very dedicated people of the Salvation Army in this very worthy cause.
Well, I'm Lieutenant Albert Wechtraut. I'm the Associate Corps Officer here at the Oswego Salvation Army and in the Fulton Salvation Army. We're very thankful for the continued support of the county and all the citizens who helped raise the funds. As you've heard of all the things that we do, we wouldn't be able to do it without the help of the community in their giving of their funds and their time and of their good. So, thank you so much for helping us out.
Thanks, everyone.
Legislator Wilber. There are none. There are no speakers for, public speakers and resolutions of the day. Reports, reports of county officials. Reports of standing committees. Reports of special committees. Legislator Stonebelle.
I'd like to report on the airport, the Tanaka Airport, on the advisory committee. If anybody's been up there and seen a tremendous change in housing, new setup, just can expand it. There's 24 nonstop, about 20 today, leaving the airport. And we continue your input. If there's anything that you feel like you want to change, your cost, some other things, I'm happy to bring them forth through the airport authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Moving on, resolutions of the day. Government courts and consumer affairs. Legislator Hall.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution accepting board elections, early voting.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Casilla.
Do we have the amount of money, how much the early voting costs is yet? Do we have it?
Yes. Seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Thank you very much.
How many voters were off? Six hundred and seventy-eight?
Six hundred and seventy-eight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Thank you. Resolution GC2 by legislator Hall.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification for property sold by the Oswego County Legislature, having as a wish required that tax proposals for tax years 2019 and prior.
Excuse property in town of Richland. Some big taxes in mind, $106,000, $568, plus all interest and penalty.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Thank you. Resolution PS1 by legislator Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution accepting New York State STOP DWI grant and authorizing budget modification for District Attorney's Office STOP DWI.
So this is a grant that we received in the amount of $19,700 for the STOP DWI.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Thank you. Resolution PS2, legislator Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification emergency management office emergency services homeland security grant. This will be your plan.
This is accepting a grant from the Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $194,943 attached to your package. You can see how the money is being spent and break down for all the agencies that it's going to.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Thank you. Resolution PS3, legislator Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification E911 overtime payments.
This resolution is going to be $1,000 within the 911 budget to cover overtime pertaining to low staffing and coverage needs, along with pro Q A projects.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Resolution PS4, legislator Wilber.
For this resolution, urgent adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing reclassification of one position in the Sheriff's Department.
This is doing justice in the medical department and the correctional facility. This is under recommendation of back to New Pop so that the individual will be working with the class and doing the particular tasks that they need.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Resolution PS5, legislator Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification Sheriff's Department uniforms and ballistic vests.
This resolution is moving $33,500 within the budget to cover 17 ballistic vests and four initial uniform packages for current recruits. I ask for its adoption to help protect our men and women who are out there keeping us safe.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Resolution IT1, legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification Department of Solid Waste additional hours.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm requesting this transfer to help cover additional hours during the holidays in the amount of $95,000.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Thank you. Resolution IT2, legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification Department of Solid Waste gasoline employment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is written, looking to transfer $17,000 from highway street equipment, $15,000 from other equipment to gas and oil until it gets through the end of the year.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Resolution IT3, legislator Walpole.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification Department of Solid Waste overtime payments.
Yes, just looking to most money to cover the overtime for all the E-Team.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Resolution IT4, legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification facilities and technology department repairs buildings and properties.
Thank you. As you can see, as written, the list of repairs here were unforeseen and which exceeded their budgeted amount due to the unforeseen circumstances. Looking to transfer $65,000 in unappropriated fund balance for the repairs.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
To oppose.
Thank you. Resolution IT5, legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification facilities and technology New York State Homeland Emergency Services Grant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We're just looking to accept the grant in the amount of $50,000 in Homeland Security.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Thank you. Resolution IT6, legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing professional services agreement with pull-up proof.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We're looking to enter into cybersecurity in the amount of $18,000 per year on a two-year contract, all within the budget.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Resolution IT7, legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing professional services contract facilities and technology department mega electricity.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we amend this, and include the amount of .04647 per kilowatt hour.
Thank you. Motion made, thank you. Any discussion?
Repeat the amount again? .04647 per kilowatt hour.
Thank you. Any others? All in favor to amend?
Aye.
Both? Carry. So now it's motion as amended. Are we all understanding? Very good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Thank you. Resolution IT8, legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing professional services contract facilities and technology department mega natural gas.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. With this, I would also like to make a motion to amend.
Second? Any discussion?
For Hastings, we're looking for 2.625 per deca tonne in all other county facilities. per in all other county facilities, three point four three five per deca per.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Legislator, shot.
Why the difference in pricing?
Hastings, uh, mixed plant historically has been interruptible gas service. It's also seasonal. Uh, and the buildings like the jail are not interruptible gas service or this building. That would be my understanding as the difference.
Be of the amount due to the lack of.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Thank you. Now, the resolution as amended?
Yes, the resolution as amended.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the resolution as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Thank you. Economic Development, Resolution.
Can I speak to that one?
Oh. Thank you. Resolution nineteen ninety by legislator Walpole.
Yes. After the following resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing purchase of additional equipment, highway department.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This equipment was previously a part of the five-year plan within the highway department and was removed from the list and we're looking to add it back to the list and close out the capital target.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry.
Thank you.
Now, legislator Stahl, Economic Development, EP one.
Thank you, Chairman. I, uh, bring forward this much anticipated resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Department of Community Development Tourism and Plan, Accepting Dispersed Transit Funds.
I agree. This is, uh, actually, we were, we're getting more than anticipated. This is a flow-through money for, uh, pertaining to our World Public Clemification Service, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution EP two by legislator Stahl.
Chairman, I bring this to court, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing county of Oswego to apply to New York State Homes and Community Renewal Housing Trust Fund Corporation Office of Community Renewal for the New York State Community Development Block Grant Program, CEGG, for well and septic system repair replacement program and lateral hookups to sewer or water, public infrastructure, and to set a public hearing to discuss this application.
Uh, I think this is something we've seen before. This is something we have applied for and then awarded and been able to disperse to a number of folks in the county. Uh, we're looking to give authorization for the folks in the community development office to apply for a half million dollars of funding through New York State Community Development Block Grant.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Thank you. Resolution EP two, EP four.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing, Chairman, to accept dispersed funding through Lake Ontario Resiliency and Economic Development Initiative.
And I think as many people saw, there was a, a number of millions of dollars handed out by the governor to our area that helped with our, uh, rising water concerns. And, uh, this is, this is the portion that was, uh, given to the county, five point three million dollars for a number of projects. And the county administrator had mentioned he has a full list of all the awards where they're being located and all that information if you missed it in, uh, any of the coverage report. So, uh, we just, this is the piece we need to do in order to authorize that moving forward.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator, Casilla.
I was just wondering, what happened to EP three? I, I saw you were confused too, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanted to back you up here and wonder why, why we don't have EP three?
Debbie Grub hit that. He's going to back me up.
EP three. EP three was David Griddy.
Oh, okay. Still got in the bag for it?
Got it. Keep up with me.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Phil, uh, let, uh, resolution HE one by legislator Carras.
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I present the following resolution for your consideration.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Health Department, additional hours and overtime budget adjustments for 2019.
So this is moving money around to, uh, cover overtime, uh, clean up this year's, labor cost.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Thank you. Resolution AT two by legislator Carras.
Mr. Legislature, uh, fellow legislators, Mr. Chairman, I present the following resolution for your consideration.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budget modification, increased early intervention program services cost.
So our numbers have went up, uh, the number of, uh, people that are using the service for early intervention. And, uh, once again, we're moving money around to cover that and get through the year.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution AT three by legislator Carras.
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Health Department, preventative biologicals expenses.
So as we all know, the flu season was a little bit brutal. Uh, we've started up again for this next one. Uh, this is to cover additional cause for additional flu vaccine, and we've had more of the, uh, high dose vaccines this year.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution AT four by legislator Carras.
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution accepting overdose data to action, OD two weight grant from New York State Department of Health Research Incorporated.
So OTI has a grant that, uh, will help us create a data, uh, to start tracking the overdose in a different manner. Uh, it is a three-year grant that totals two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, so seventy-two thousand dollars a year starting this year.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Resolution AT five by legislator Carras.
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolutions for your consideration.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution support allocating unrestricted resources to local health departments to fortify the division of core public health services and prepare for implementation of expanded public health mandates.
So this one really narrows down to the fact that the state has now told us the lead standards lowered, which means we need to do more testing. We're going to be investing a lot more time and money. And the state has not fallen through with any money for counties on this. So this is a multi-county, uh, resolution to ask the state of New York to supply some of that money. Uh, we don't have a lot of lead time on doing this, and, uh, it is going to be expensive.
Attorney. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry.
Just, just want to let you know, that's why we got the two hundred and sixteen first and another deal.
There you go.
Still sign the plans back.
Resolution HE six by legislator Carras.
And we're still not done with that. Uh, Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budget modification for purchase of an additional x-ray fluorescence paint analyzer.
This is one piece of equipment that they need for the lead testing. It's twelve thousand five hundred dollars. There is a, uh, state reimbursement on that. Uh, we do need to purchase this in order to comply with what they told us, and we have to comply with it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Thank you. Human Services, Resolution HS one by legislator Rehale.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Department of Social Services, appointment and training to accept Federal Trade Act funding.
Uh, this is, uh, federal funding in the amount of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, uh, to help with, uh, dislocated workers, one percent federal funded.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution HS two by legislator Rehale.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Department of Social Services, to transfer funds for additional hours added in the division.
Uh, this has to do, uh, with, uh, some extra work that's coming along, uh, having to do with, uh, distributing heat, um, uh, doing some training for new hires, uh, and take, you know, covering for vacancies.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution HS three by legislator Rehale.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Department of Social Services, Mental Hygiene Division, to transfer funds for a one-time contractual increase.
Uh, this is, uh, moving forty-five thousand, uh, dollars from, uh, previous year's unspent funding, uh, and, uh, in order to use that, uh, that money for, uh, deficit and, uh, some mental health services at Oswego Health.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution HS four, legislator Rehale.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution approving parks and recreation fee schedule.
Uh, this is to, uh, bump up our, uh, or to, and create a hundred dollar security deposit on the fee schedule.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution HS five by legislator Rehale.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Department of Parks and Recreation, camp policy improvements.
Uh, this is to allow for, uh, some money that was left over at the end of the year in their budget due to, uh, a shortened season that they didn't anticipate, uh, twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars that they'd like to spend on, uh, improvements and equipment at Camp House.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution HS six by legislator Rehale.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Department of Parks and Recreation, camp Zerbi improvements.
Uh, similarly, this is to use some money that was, uh, left over at the end of the year for improvements at Camp Zerbi, because it cost a hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution HS seven by legislator Rehale.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution awarding professional services contract, Office for the Aging Senior Nutrition Services.
Uh, this is for, uh, meals through the Office of the Aging, um, in the amount of one dot, one million four hundred and eighty-nine dollars, one hundred and fourteen dollars.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator, Casilla.
Is this pass-through money or is this our portion?
Uh, a portion of it, sir. Can you be able to address that further?
This, that's what the contracts cost to provide the meals. We don't receive all that money back with our grants. A portion of it, about fifty-two percent comes from county tax base that covers that amount of money.
So fifty-two percent is going to be our portion, is it?
Correct.
Forty-eight percent?
No, fifty-two.
Fifty-two. Okay. And, uh, this goes to the Office of the Aging or does this go on outside services? I didn't look at the table.
This is the contract for OCO to provide the meals from home-delivered meals and the six Convergic meal sites, as well as nutrition counseling, nutrition education, and some of the recreation that they have at the Convergic meal sites.
Good.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Need to break that?
Uh, we're, we're halfway through.
Resolution HS eight by legislator Rehale.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution awarding professional services contract, DSS, Career Pathways System Services.
Um, the, the, uh, all the remaining resolutions, uh, eight through, uh, fourteen have to do with, uh, contracts for mandated services. Thought I'd preface that for all of them. And, uh, this one in particular, seventeen thousand dollars, uh, for the Career Pathways System Services. This is that Metrics Online, uh, Learning Program, which has been pretty well-received and used throughout the time.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator, Casilla.
Same question as before, legislator Rehale. Is this, I know it's mandated, okay, but is this pass-through money or is this, what portion of that is going to be county's?
It's a, it's a hundred percent state and, uh, federal money.
I'll, I'll be asking that for all of those through fourteen. That's why, I mean, that's why I had a question mark in all of them.
Thank you.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you. For, for looking for you, Phil, at the, at the, just to ask that question, when we, we weren't able to find you. Your, your didn't very good.
Uh, for brevity, I can answer all those at this time?
Yeah.
Uh, HS eight and nine are both one hundred percent federal funded. HS ten through fourteen, sixty-two percent state, forty, thirty-eight percent local.
Any other discussion?
Just everything that stayed within the county. I see some of them were going outside the county and I saw the, it's on all of them, legislator Rehail. I don't want to mundane you each time to ask you why we went outside the county.
Well, and they, each time they made the choice for the either, you know, the most , obviously for the best services possible for the constituent. Stacy, I don't know if you want to address that question further?
Although the business adults may be in Syracuse or two of our members, they have been very much a presence in Oswego in their offices here. So they're regional.
Thanks very much.
I would mention that the pros and cons of each one of these resolutions are attached to your.
I saw that in there and I had to question the reasoning.
Any other discussion on HS eight? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Resolution HS nine by legislator Rehail.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution awarding professional services contract DSS homeless housing services.
This is in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight, nine hundred eighty-one dollar annual cost for homeless housing services, Tana family. It's a three-year contract with the option of two additional years depending on the performance of the agency.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Resolution HS ten legislator Rehail.
Before to go. Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution awarding professional services contract DSS family counseling program.
This is five hundred and four thousand six, nine hundred sixty-four for family counseling program. It's a three-year contract with the option of two additional years depending on the performance of the agency as well.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Resolution HS eleven by legislator Rehail.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution awarding professional services contract DSS adolescent sexual offender treatment program services.
It's mandated two hundred twenty-eight thousand, while it's not mandated that amount, but it's mandated service, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars annual cost. This is similar with a three-year contract with the option of two additional years depending on the performance of the agency.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Thank you. Resolution HS twelve by legislator Rehail.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution awarding professional services contract DSS school-based preventative services for Oswego County Public Schools.
This is to Liberty Resources in the amount of six hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars for school-based preventive services. The scope of work was listed in the memo that was attached.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Resolution HS thirteen by legislator Rehail.
You're right. I can't help it. Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption. We should get it now.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution awarding professional services contract DSS parent education program services.
This is going to charities, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred twelve dollar annual cost.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Thank you. Resolution HS fourteen by legislator Rehail.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution awarding professional services contract DSS transportation program for Oswego County DSS.
This is also to charities, it's three hundred nine thousand, six hundred ninety dollars annual cost for transportation services. Three-year contract with the option of two additional years.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Shaw.
I don't see, Phil, you outlined this to me, but what amount of this is paid? This is mandated, right?
Right. This is, this is also sixty-two percent state, thirty-eight percent local.
Is this for cabs or busing? What?
The scope of work listed here is two full-time, three-part-time transporters provide door-to-door services for mandated clients of child protective, preventive, and foster care services, including foster children. Transporters use their personal vehicles and are reimbursed point five eight per mile. Transports include medical appointments, therapy, parenting groups, addiction treatment for appearances, and supervised visitation for parents and their children placed in care.
Thank you. Legislator Castillo.
OCO didn't put in a bid on this at all, or? I just want to, only because it's hard time for patient companies to come in. They know that they lost sixteen, sixteen runs attached here and I thought they might want to pick up something like that. Was the only vendors responded? Okay, I see that they're the only vendors this time, but I've got it in my mind.
Carry. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Thank you. Finance personnel, resolution FP one legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution establishing date for relevel of 2019, 2020 unpaid school taxes.
This is normal. Every year, business, as you know, we make them whole. It's just set that date.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Resolution FP two by legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution establishing date for relevel of 2019 unpaid village taxes.
As the previous resolution, we make them whole, sets the date.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Resolution FP three by legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution awarding professional services contract Human Resources Department self-insured pharmacy benefit administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to commend our, our personnel department and their diligence on this. This, this agreement will bring the payable savings of approximately one point six million dollars to the taxpayer in this county. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Resolution FP four by legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution fixing time and place for public hearing on the tentative county budget for the year 2020.
As you know, our budget is coming up. This is just setting the time and place where we, uh, practice for the, uh, public hearing. Public hearing on the tentative budget. Thank you.
We'll help you with that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Carry. Thank you. Legislator Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I make the motion that an executive session discussing matters pending, opposed that conditions sell release of real property for the proposed activation of securities or sale or exchange of securities held except public party, but only when public, publicity was substantially affected by their, uh...
Should I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Call regular session back to order.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules for two resolutions. One, resolution establishing capital project number one twelve, and the other resolution operates to acquisition of certain real property within the Village of Mexico with the County of Oswego Department of Social Services Department.
Second? Seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Repose.
Okay. Mr. Wilber.
Mr. Rehail.
Oh, Mr. Rehail. Under the last bad dog.
Yeah. I get two more. This HS fifteen, I offer that resolution and urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution establishing capital project number one twelve Department of Social Services property acquisition.
This is to create a capital project that would allow us to build a, construct a parking lot across the street from DSS. Forty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty dollars would be coming from the OTAS funds and fifty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars from a movement from the DSS budget having to do with adaptive services, that funds that were not any longer needed this year. The total purchase price of the property is a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Shaw.
Yes, I think we ought to, once before it's been mentioned, how many parking spots is across the street and not to new parking lot we're talking about, like the old ones?
The need is clear because we have about three hundred employees at DSS. We have two hundred and seven parking spaces and about an average of seventy people visiting the site a day as, as clients. So there's clearly a need. We have estimated parking lot in the information manual that is distributed at seventy-two parking spaces. I believe we may be able to get that to eight with the configuration that we have designed.
Okay. I just want to bring up a point. It's, it's needed very desperately. I think it's a safety issue. People start parking in the streets and any, any one of those areas is quite, quite dangerous and cars in the winter months and so on, it'll be a lot worse. So I think this parking lot has helped solve some of that problem.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Five opposed. Nineteen in favor.
Thank you. Uh, resolution carries. Resolution sixteen by legislator Rehail.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing acquisition of certain real property within the Village of Mexico by the County of Oswego Department of Social Services Department.
This is to actually disperse the funds and purchase the property.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Bravo.
I just wanted to bring up, I was chair of Human Services, my name is Al, for many years. We hosted, I was invited and hosted many meetings out to the Department of Social Services. You could count on everybody being late for those meetings and you could never find a parking spot. Meetings were not even scheduled anymore in the winter because it got that much worse for the, the street cleaners on the side not being in the park. The neighboring property owners will be happy to see another designated parking spot that employees and visitors could take care of because they parked. The police recall on many occasions, all on a regular basis, all the way up around, all around the block because of lack of parking. This has been a conversation since I've been a legislator. The cost is significantly higher of property acquisitions of all over the surrounding area. This has been the best opportunity to put in front of the legislature, I think, since I've been here, especially taking advantage of using some of the OTAS dollars for purchase. And one other piece that I think is important is, we will might, Sue County Land Bank had on, that we can communicate with the county on parcel C, just kind of, just discussion to subdivide the existing house. And so we're not, the county's not taking all parcels off the tax rolls for good. We can work with them to get this property, you know, reinvest in and, and put it back in the tax rolls in the future, so.
That's it. Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislator Castillo.
I just wanted, I just said to Bravo, that, the last statement about the, the other property, I didn't quite get all that.
Property C, we have a conversation to subdivide, taking a house off, that's not being the model. It's taking parcel C to parking so that that parcel could be retrofitted, refurbished, sold, and put back in the village tax rolls.
Okay. I, I just, I know I can't include everybody because I've been told that I can't include everybody in this. I thought that our job was to increase the tax base. And that's what every meeting that we've had, that I can remember where we, we've tried to, we're, we're putting a sewer line out to the airport so that we can increase the tax base there. We're doing a wastewater treatment plan out by Sunoco, which is in Valley, which we can increase the tax base there. And yet, over the past six years that I've been here, I've seen three pieces of property come off the tax rolls. And I haven't seen anything where we've gained anything from those properties coming off the tax rolls, other than we're decreasing our tax base. And that's what our job is, is to increase our tax base. Now, I've, this property assessed at a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars in one year is five thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars in taxes. Now that's county, school taxes, town, town highway, town garage. That's all that added together. Now, we're going to take that off the tax rolls. Now, yes, the neighbors might be, you know, happy, there's going to be a parking spot there, but now all of a sudden, this property's coming off their tax rolls, which means somewhere, somebody's going to have to make up the difference in that. And it's not like it's going to be, like property C is going to be put back on the tax rolls, but the rest of it is not going to be put back on the tax rolls. So for the next two hundred years, you're going to lose that tax mark. It's not going to come back. We're not going to get it back. It's never going to come back. And we're talking about safety because people are parking on the street. Well, now we're going to have to cross the street to park. And still, from my, we're going to gain forty more spots than the people we have working there. If that's, the number comes up right, we had three hundred people, we only have two hundred and seventy parking spaces, is that right?
Two hundred and seven.
Two hundred and seven? All right, okay. So then you're going to pick seventy-two in there and still doesn't, still doesn't equal the number of employees, to be honest. So, but we're going to take it off the tax rolls. And I, I can't see why we would do such a thing. It, it's, it's not logical to take property off the tax rolls forever. And now, we talked about property C, where is property C going to go? Who's it going to go to and what's going to happen with that? How is it going to get refurbished? Are we going to refurbish it, the county? What, what's happening with that? Somebody tell me what's happening with that.
The discussion is to work with the land bank.
Work with the land bank? In what sense are you talking about?
To fix it up a little bit and put it back, it's already tenanted right now.
Right. Well, yeah, but does that, does that mean that we're turning that property over to the land bank or the land bank's going to work for the county?
That's to be determined.
Sir, that's, sir, that's not part of the resolution.
Well, it's, it's the purchase, purchases those three properties and what's going to happen with them. So it's, it's very pertinent to the, to the resolution, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. You know, it's, it's important because if we're going to take a piece of property, use taxpayer money to buy a piece of property and then give it to a private entity that is going to turn around and refurbish it and then sell it and make money for the entity, not for the county, but put it back on the tax rolls, that is, is very pertinent to what's, what's happening here. Are we going to refurbish it or are we going to have the land bank refurbish it? Isn't the land bank going to own it?
Legislator Castillo, if I may, the, the contract that's attached to the resolution is for the purchase of the property, the three parcels. Anything deals with any of those parcels regarding sale or transfer would have to come back before the legislature for a vote. The, it can't just go to the land bank on this resolution. It would have to come back before this body and this body would have to decide, there's no public purpose or there's public purpose in transferring it to the land bank. So the, what the chair was trying to say is that, that, that would be farther down the road than the current contract. If, if that's, if that's what they're going to do, they may decide to keep it. I don't know.
Yeah, but during the, right to the beginning of this discussion, legislator Bravo said that we're going to refurbish it and the land bank's going to refurbish it. So that's why I'm bringing it up now.
He referenced that as an option, sir.
Oh, as an option, okay.
It has not been decided yet. Don't jump ahead.
Well, that's what I heard, that it's going to happen. And if, what, what I heard is going to happen, you know, I mean, you got twenty to five, so I'm sure that it's going to happen. Okay, I'm sorry.
It was twenty to four, Tom didn't come through.
Right, well, that's talking about the next, the next meeting. Now, you've got homeowners that are next door to that to say, yeah, well, we, we don't want people parking on the street, but I'm sure that, that, that one piece of property
Spring Street.
Spring Street, it's owned by two individuals. I'm sure that they would like to know that there's going to be a parking lot next door to them where, if you remember, legislator Bravo was very adamant about not having smoking on county property. So now all of a sudden, those people are going to be on their property, smoking and getting rid of their, their waste and everything. You know, I mean, it's, yeah, it's funny, you can laugh about it, but I'm just telling you, I don't want to have a parking lot next to me, a, you know, a public service, a DSS parking lot next to me. I'm sorry. And I don't have a fit about it. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just see this in my estimation, I'm the legislator for the area out there, having casually spoken with individuals about a number of things. I see this as, as a, this whole process has been a convergence of fortunate circumstances that brought this all together. And I see part of my job is contributing to decision-making that allows for balanced benefit to the community. The balanced benefit that accurately comes will be taken off the tax roll. The balance is that we'll have a safer community, we'll have an increase and be able to provide services to others, and there's a potential, there's an opportunity that a piece of that property may be able to get put back on the tax rolls at a later date. So there again, I, I see my role as being just contributing to decision-making that makes a balance, not some extreme decision, et cetera, but do the best for the most with the least. I see that happening here. Again, it's just a fortunate convergence that happened at this time.
Thank you. Legislator Bravo, hand. All goods. Legislator Rehail.
Well, you know, the folks that live across the street already have a parking lot, you know, S building, they're in their, in their view, they know what's there. We're mandated to have the Department of Social Services, we're basically running this Department of Social Services on behalf of the state to do it. We, there are employees there. They're some of our neighbors and friends and family. It's been tough for them for years. This is a really incredible opportunity, I think, to do the right thing over there. And the fact that we don't know exactly what the parking lot configuration is going to be, we don't know exactly how many spaces we can put in there yet. We know that we can probably put between seventy-two and eighty. We don't know exactly where the property line's going to be for, for the additional property that we could sell, so we do not know what we can sell. We do not, we can recruit a good deal of the local share and reimbursements from the state that mandates us to have DSS up to sixty-five percent. Everything but the land is reimbursable, that includes the structures that we could purchase and the, and the demolition and construction. So it's just, to me, it's a pretty incredible opportunity. The, if there are remaining tobacco funds of thirty-five percent that we can't reimburse, we can maybe able to use tobacco funds for that as well.
Let's see, Senator Bravo.
When I, when I said safety, I was just including just the fact of people not parking on the street. I personally have driven it down Spring Street and you try to look up to your left or up the hill on Route Three as it comes into Mexico, and you cannot see only a partial way up there. One night, my wife was driving and she did pull out and look, did not see that a trailer was coming, really steaming along pretty good. We got out and I was able to clear it, but you cannot see that house, that house there any farther than a short distance up that road. Just a safety factor, one other safety factor that I personally see myself. So I just want to bring that point up.
Thank you. Legislator Joe, can I, did you hear anything?
I have a plan to, but I think she was there first.
While she concedes, the legislator.
Thank you. Now, has this piece of property B been on the market for a while?
All three properties have been on for about a hundred and fifty or sixty days.
Okay, so if the neighbors would have been concerned about what would be coming into that land, that they could have been on it themselves, who would have purchased and bought it?
Clearly.
Because that's what it is usually. If you want to control the land next to you, buy it and then you have control of it.
All three, all three were on sale separately until recently. It was only within about the last three weeks that they reduced the price for all three together to a hundred and ten thousand.
Thank you.
Legislator.
No, they reduced the asking price to a hundred and ten, we offered a hundred and five, and that was successful.
Well, just in response to legislator Chesboro, not everyone has the resources to do that, which is why we kind of have to protect those interests as well. So I do feel really bad for that neighbor. I think that nobody wants a parking lot right next door, no matter how well it's landscaped. And, and just one other point, because I do believe that there was tinkering about some of legislator Castillo's latest points. The reason we're in this position is because people weren't looking down the road when we, when we made that building and that parking lot to begin with. They weren't projecting down the road. So his point was, let's make sure when we do this, that we have a full plan. And it doesn't feel like we have a full plan yet, so we're not even sure. And I'm... And it doesn't feel like we have a full plan yet, so we're not even sure, and I realize that there, it's time sensitive and, um, we wanna act on this immediately because we might lose the deal, I guess, although it's been on the market for a long time, so I find that hard to believe. But, um, that's his point, is that let's make sure we have the full plan before we move ahead so that we don't find ourselves, again, in another position like we are currently, or we didn't look far enough down the road when we produced the one to begin with and the parking space.
Thank you. Legislature Castillo. Uh, what are the, uh, first, I'm gonna hit the first one because I'll forget it if I don't. Uh, what's, the urgency of it, it happened right away. I, I don't see the urgency of that, I really don't.
Motivated seller.
Okay. And?
Motivated seller, we just lowered their price, uh, dramatically to the 110. Um, I don't think it's appropriate to say anything more than they're motivated to sell it. I mean, we have the ability to close, um, next month if, uh, the surveys and, uh...
So somebody else might buy it.
Exactly. But they can't right now if we move today.
But somebody else might buy it and keep it on the tax rules, is what I'm getting at. Second part is, what, are the taxes current on all three parcels? Why not?
They are not, but they would have to be made a whole, kind of, of closing.
Okay, good. So if they're not current, is it one year or is it two years? Is it a year and a half, six months? What's, what's the...
The numbers that I have, they're, all three are current for the, the, the 2019 taxes.
2019.
The numbers are in the package.
So if they, they hold on to them and rely on them to get them for nothing because they won't pay their 2020 tax. And we, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna jump into it.
I frankly don't think it's worth taking that chance, especially with, uh, the, of the ability to, to, you know, with the, what the plan that we formulated, even though it's not written in stone, what, how many upcoming spaces it's gonna be, or, you know, what, whether we're gonna use, uh, you know, charbia or, uh, you know, some other material, it's, it's just too good, it's too good an opportunity to pass up.
I, I, I differ with you on the fact that, uh, something that we, you know, that's something that we should jump into now when we're talking about taxpayer money. I know that we're gonna get reimbursed for this and reimbursed for that, but the reimbursement is still coming out of taxpayer money somewhere. I'm sorry. You may. Alright, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We got one more, right, right?
No. You want me to make one up?
Any unfinished business? Thank you. Any miscellaneous business? Legislature, uh, Castle.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Um, the brochures that are on your desk is, uh, a tax property, exemptions for veterans. Since this is a birthday, I just wanted, that's a week, I should say, because we're gonna celebrate it all week. I wanted to thank Real Property for putting it together. Uh, they put that poster that's up in the window, uh, for the fair last spring of last summer. We'll be taking it again up to the fair, we hope. So I just wanna let you know that Oswego County is letting people know that we support our veterans and are very proud of them. I'm one of them, so I thank you very much for doing that, uh, for Real Property, and we appreciate your efforts on putting it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislature Castillo.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, this past election season proved as to why we don't like to put things on referendums. And I saw that the, uh, referendum that we, uh, put forward for four years kinda got defeated, uh, two to one. And I think that the same referendum should be going forth with our raises and a lot of other things because if, if it went the way it should have gone with all of the 20 people to represent so much of the county and represent all those voters, it should have been defeated. You know, it should have won by, you know, a large margin, but it didn't. The people wanna, wanna say in what happens up here and they wanna say in what you're doing. And they proved that by a two to one margin, and I wanna thank all the voters in Oswego County that stepped up, took a look at the back of that ballot and voted no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous business? Thank you. Legislature Wilber. Somebody stole the sign-in sheet for this, uh...
Mr. Mitchell Broadform.
Oh, alright. I had some ladies ready to carry me over here. Alright, uh, public comment period.
Can we come in the meeting first?
Sure.
Okay. What should do it, Jerry? Jerry, seconded by Legislature Reed. Uh, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Thank you. Public comment period with Martha Marshall from my hometown of Central Square, come forward. Although you don't live in Central Square anymore.
No, I'm in Palaski, but Oswego County's born and raised.
Very good. Um, yep, if you could address the crowd, we have five minutes.
Do I have to turn this on or is it on?
It's on. Just bend it down to you.
I also have a lot of voice, so...
Bend it down to you.
Can you hear me now? Good afternoon. My name is Martha Marshall and I'd like to speak with you about the issue of transportation in Oswego County, particularly outside the cities of Fulton and Oswego. PALS, Palaski Assisting Local Seniors. Started in December of 2014. I started volunteering with PALS in October of 2017. I call the PALS answering machine every day that is housed at the Rural Migrant Ministries Office in Richland to see if we received any messages from people needing assistance. When we do get a message, I call the person to clarify what is it that they need and to try to get some details. PALS is only able to operate within the village of Palaski, so sometimes we make referrals if PALS is unable to help. If it appears that we can assist, then I reach out to our group of volunteers. We currently have 10 volunteers on our roster, however, three of them go south in October and don't return until May. We have had up to 21 seniors and clients on our list of regular callers needing assistance. Most of the calls are for transportation to local doctors, healthcare center, post office, bank and grocery stores. PALS also gets calls, though, asking for things like help changing some light bulbs and batteries and smoke detectors. We had a request last winter to get milk and bread during a prolonged snowstorm to a local 90-year-old senior in the village. We had a call from Julia in Sandy Creek not too long ago needing a handyman to help around her home, and a call from John, an elderly man from Altmar, needing some yard work. From October of 2017 to September of 2019, PALS has received 124 requests. 95% were for transportation. Most of our requests for transportation comes from the senior complex located within the village, Spring Brook Apartments. These calls, this 95% of those calls were involving seniors needing a ride. Spring Brook Apartment Complex is 3/10 of a mile from the Palaski Health Center. Those seniors are on Medicare and have no access to public transportation. They have insurance, but no way to get 3/10 of a mile to the health center. PALS also recently received a call from Rural Migrant Ministries asking for assistance with transportation for non-English speaking migrant workers in the area so that they could get groceries. We also recently, within the last few months, took a call from an RN case manager at the Palaski Health Center, or Conex Care as it's known now, looking, and she was looking for transportation for a patient on Medicare that needed to get to the city of Oswego for physical therapy. I would like to read to you a letter that PALS received back on June 13th of 2018 from Dorothy. "I am an 87-year-old and live less than two miles outside the village of Palaski. I am a widow and cannot drive anymore. Since June, I have had a spinal problem plus two falls. I have relied on friends for rides to the doctor and to physical therapy. PALS has just started to help me and I appreciate it as my friends are not always able to do that. OCO, Oswego County Opportunities, can only give me rides two times a month. I'm on Medicare. If I have an appointment on any other times, they charge me $50, a ride to come into the village to the Palaski Health Center. They charge her, they would charge her $50 to come two miles outside the village of Palaski. I cannot afford this. They charge $75 for transportation to Syracuse for doctor's appointments. When I took the OCO bus to go see my husband at St. Luke's, there were usually only one or two people taking the bus. I was one of them. I feel if they charged more reasonable fee, there might be more riders. OCO also offered me another way to get to Oswego, which is not convenient. It means going to Fulton and then transferring to another bus to go to Oswego, and then they would let me off at a local senior facility. I would have to try to get a taxi or walk to get to the nursing home to see my husband. I hope that a better way of helping people to go to their appointments can be found. It would be wonderful." This is not just about Palaski. Legislature Kessler or the new legislator, Mr. Yurden, what about Sandy Creek, Redfield and Boylston? Legislature Dave Holtz, what about Williamstown? Legislature Roy Beehill, what about Constantia and Cleveland? Legislature House and Mr. Martino, Legislature Martino, what about Hastings? What's the status of transportation in those areas? Rural transportation means opportunity, mobility, independence and inclusion to those who live and work in remote areas of the community. Rural transportation also means the ability to get out and about in a community, to shop, to visit friends and to stay socially connected. Rural transportation can also be a life or death concern for some of our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, Eileen Soika?
Yes. I'm an original founding member of PALS. This is a statement from the Reverend David Hayes, who's the pastor of Park United Methodist Church in Palaski and president of the Board of Directors of Love Incorporated of the Eastern Shore. Love Incorporated is a coalition of churches of a variety of denominations who are networking with community service organizations in order to provide coordinated help to persons in need. Love Incorporated serves those who live in the APW, Sandy Creek, Mexico and Palaski School Districts. The statement reads as follows. Persons in need frequently come to Park United Methodist Church seeking help. They come to the church rather than a community service office because they have no transportation. Eliminating a vehicle is typically an early step in a slide toward poverty. Without transportation, there's no way for them to reach an office in Mexico, Fulton or Oswego in order to receive the essential services they need. Unable to reach the appropriate office, the consequences they face include losing eligibility for food stamps, public assistance or winter fuel assistance, losing eligibility for disability benefits, missing probation appointments, child protection appointments or court dates, unable to obtain food, clothing or household necessities from food pantries and thrift shops, unable to obtain legal assistance or mental health services, unable to access drug or alcohol rehabilitation services, unable to make medical appointments, unable to access pregnancy support services, unable to access homelessness prevention services. The list goes on. I provide these because I am aware of specific situations in which these are the precise consequence people faced were it not for the help we were able to provide. And these are not just consequences for the individual. Missed appointments, missed court dates, medical procrastination, poor nutrition, addiction recidivism and the additional burden upon social workers costs the county. People in need may not be able to reach the social service office, but know they can reach the church and recurrently the help they are seeking is for transportation, either a bus ticket or gas money to reimburse a friend who owns an operable vehicle and is willing to make the drive. Providing the $20 to $40 generally required by these friends for a ride would be poor stewardship of a church's resources. Bus tokens make more sense, but rarely got people where they needed to go, even under the old OCO system. For instance, a bus from Palaski to Mexico and back required a family to devote an entire day, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, to a single appointment. And there was no conceivable bus route that could deliver someone from Palaski to the county seat in Oswego at all. If that were difficult enough under the old system, I cannot imagine how the new mobilization manager system will end up proving anything other than an insurmountable obstacle. It would only take one unanswered or unresolved call to convince a person that the county's transportation program is a pointless hassle. In establishing Love Incorporated, we discovered that this same issue presents itself at every one of our churches. We then conducted an informal survey of a wide variety of community service workers and charitable organizations. Rural transportation in this county was identified across the board as one of the most critical issues we face and one which, which affects every other way we attempt to service this vulnerable population. In spite of this fact, I was astonished to learn that the transportation needs of those who live in our rural areas has never been studied by the county, so far as any of us are aware. It certainly does not appear to be a county priority. Available transportation subsidies appear to be channeled into more urban transportation needs without consideration for the needs of the rural population. While the church is often called upon to provide financial help to the poor, I am aware that other populations who are otherwise financially sound also have serious transportation needs, specifically senior citizens, the disabled, persons with mental health issues, persons with addiction issues, mothers with children and veterans, to name a few, are among those who have shared with me the struggles they face and the consequences they endure because they do not have adequate available transportation to the places they need to go. And so, I would respectfully request the county legislature to take the following actions. One, direct that the transportation needs of the rural population within Oswego County be studied in order to gather the information necessary to develop a realistic transportation plan that would service those needs. Two, develop a transportation plan that not only considers root profitability, but takes into account the costs incurred by the county when social service needs are left unmet. Three, direct the mobilization manager, when one is hired, to consider the assessment of rural transportation needs as a high priority item. With appreciation, Reverend David Hayes. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to call for Andrea Dean. This time, I'd like to call for Andrea Dean.
And I joined PALS when I was stranded without a ride and could not, I was replaced by, could not believe that in the rural parts of this county, there is no transportation. Even if you have money, there's no transportation, there's no cabs, there's nothing. And there's just, once you get involved with it, there's just so many sad situations, people who don't go to doctor's appointments, they just can't get there. And also, the bus system, I just don't see that ever being adequate to handle these problems. It's not just low-income people, it's, you know, it's everyone. So there could be a system with a slightly descheduled. Volunteers are trying so hard, I know in Palaski, but they just could never handle the whole situation. And I hope that the county develops a system and suits for us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on... You're already standing, Jerry.